Come to support the meeting, both the staff who are here for the evening and visitors from the community as well. So I think we will call the roll just to officially have our voices on the recording. Would you like to start with that, Councilor Bennett?
Mayor.
Say your name.
Councilor Anderson likewise.
Thank you.
Councilor Nanki here.
Councilor McCoyd here.
Councilor Dickey here.
Councilor Benjamin here.
Councilor Benner's here.
Councilor Lewis here.
Thank you, and I'm Mayor Peterson, and welcome everyone. So this evening's work session has several main topics, and certainly we will have a review of where we are at this point. We have -- we'll hear more information about this, but at this point, we have selected the site being the former O'Brien Automobile Dealership in North Salem, north of the downtown area. And we've also directed a polling firm, and they're going to be here to -- they are here this evening to give us a report on the polling in the community regarding attitudes toward the new police facility needs. And we're also going to be looking at specific information that we asked staff to come back to us with regarding the two choices that we really have narrowed it down to, and that is the full recommended program on the reduced site and a reduced program on the reduced site. So we're going to be looking at the costs and planning for both sizes, and we'll be discussing that this evening. And the other thing we'll be discussing, I believe, is we'll have some further information about parking. Is that correct? I think.
Yes, that is correct.
I think we do. Okay, good. All right, so I'm pleased that everyone is here. We'll start with our city manager. Steve Powers has a recap from our last work session and some other information. Welcome.
Actually, Mayor, you did a fabulous job of recapping
Oh, sorry.
what has been a very incremental and, I think, deliberative process. As the mayor said, we have, from the direction we received from you at the April 4th work session, we've gone back. We have produced some revised design concepts for the smaller site. We've gone back and done additional due diligence on the pros and cons, the financial analysis for whether the Willamette Valley Communications Center, the 911 Center, should be included or not. We also have additional information, have gone back over the parking as directed by council. So tonight, we'll be prepared to summarize that information for you. It is in the report that was provided, and we have staff here that can go into any additional detail that council may like to do this evening. And we look forward to council's discussion regarding the police facility size, and if time permits, because we do want to be sensitive to our timeframe for the work session, looking forward to discussion regarding next steps. You have set June 8th as the date for a public hearing, and we believe, staff believes, that the discussion tonight will be very, very helpful for that June 8th public hearing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to jump right into polling data, and we do have the representative of DHM Research with us this evening, and I think you have a PowerPoint, it looks like, up on the slide. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor Peterson and council. It's great to be here and to share with you a bit of what we've learned about your community and some of their thoughts on this project. I am John Horvick with DHM Research. We're a nonpartisan and independent public opinion and policy firm based out of Portland. We do work all across the Northwest and have worked here in the city of Salem on a number of issues over the years, and this is, in some ways, a continuation of actually some work we did a couple of years ago as well. So I'm going to just walk you through some of the highlights from the research that we've delivered a report, full report already, so some of you may have read that. If you have read that and absorbed it, then I'm going to repeat some of that information. If you haven't, then this will be new, but I'm going to be here to be able to answer questions too, so I want to be able to address that. Let's see if I can work this. There we go. So just to do a little stage setting first, the survey that we did, and I'll walk you through the methodology in a moment, so think about it as three primary goals. One was, of course, to assess support for potential bond measure to fund a new police facility. That's probably the big one. And then to identify some features which the public might think are persuasive or influential in how they think about whether or not to support a potential bond for a police facility, and which ones they maybe don't. And then third, while we're out there, we wanted to check in with them on some just general satisfaction with the city and some other city services as well. While we were talking to folks, we wanted to gather a little bit of information, but also puts into a context how they think about this issue as well. So those are the three primary goals of the research. Now, just to ground you in the methodology, this was a telephone survey, so we reached people over the phone. A sample size of 508 is what we were able to max things out at. So we contacted people by phone using a registered telephone list. These are all registered voters in the city of Salem. In the cross tabs, which we've also provided to staff, and I'll mention a couple of things tonight, we have detailed information about age and gender, area of the city, political party, vote history, all those sorts of things too. So if there are curiosities about some of the subgroup breakdowns, I can try to answer those questions as well, although I'll primarily be focused on the opinions of the community as a whole.
John, I want to just direct your
Sure.
... attention to the microphone.
Oh.
It really isn't for us, but it is for the recording, and so you know, it's not maybe the latest, but if you speak up into it more, it will transmit better.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll do my best here. So margin of error, 4.4 percent. Okay. All right, so key takeaways. I'll repeat some of these things repeatedly throughout the numbers here, but I want to just give you a heads up of what we're going to see. So first, satisfaction with the city's high, and we see that measured in a couple of different ways, whether we ask generally about the city or specific services. One area of concern that I'm going to draw attention to, even though it wasn't the primary purpose of the survey, is around transportation, though. So generally, people are feeling pretty good. About the bond itself, the public is split, and if you've seen the report, you know that already, but I'll try to show you in detail as well. We asked about the bond in a couple of different ways, and regardless of how we asked about it, the numbers are pretty similar. However, support did increase when we told them more about what the facility would include. Now, I know we did the survey, by the way, in March, early March, and you've made a lot of progress in the last couple of months. We'll have to keep that in mind too as we look at the results, that these are opinions of Salem voters two months ago, not -- they're not able to absorb the work you've done since then, so things could be different today. And then some features that really stood out to voters that made them more, or that persuaded them that voting for the bond measure might be something they want to do, really meeting future needs, being earthquake resilient, and being centrally located. And we could, we'll talk about centrally located in a couple of different ways. So those are the key takeaways, and let's get to the numbers. So like I said, people are feeling good in Salem. We asked this question just generally, are you very satisfied, somewhat satisfied, somewhat dissatisfied, or very dissatisfied by the way things are going in Salem? And you can see here, the top line are the satisfied numbers, so 25 percent, one out of four. Salem residents say that they're very satisfied. A majority, 57 percent, say that they're satisfied, so taken together, 82 percent on the right side of things. Pretty good number. Dissatisfied, just 15 percent. Okay, that's all things considered, everything that's going on, however they interpret that question, you have 82 percent as Salem residents who say that they're satisfied. Now, this is a great benchmark question, and now that you've asked it, I would encourage the city to ask it again in the future. One thing you'd want to keep track of if you do is that total 82 percent number, but also that ratio between very and somewhat satisfied, to see where people move on that scale as well. But overall, this is a solid number. But it is overall. We did want to get at some individual services and programs that the city provides as well for a couple of reasons. First, just we were talking to folks, so we didn't want to miss the opportunity to learn some important information, but we also wanted to learn, particularly with police and public safety, and I suppose the library as well, how people saw those services. Some things that we would look for, for thinking about a future campaign, would be if there was strong dissatisfaction with either of these services. If there were, particularly with police and public safety, it would be a real red flag that there would be some work that would need to be done just in terms of community relations and building up support around that service, perhaps before you went out for a bond measure. People are generally unwilling to support their dollars for programs and services that they're not satisfied with. But with police and public safety, we see that 90 percent are satisfied with the service of police and public safety, including 54 percent who are very satisfied. That's that top line there. Parks and Recreation, we see high numbers as well, 85 percent satisfied. Sewer and Water Services, 82 percent satisfied. The Library, 79 percent. And then remember where I said streets and roads and transportation may be the one issue just to draw attention to outside of the primary goal of this survey? For Streets and Bridges, just 69 percent satisfied. So still, a majority of residents saying they're satisfied, but pay attention to the very satisfied, 14 percent for Streets and Bridges versus a 47 percent, the next one up for Library. So that's something to pay attention to. And we see it again. We asked an open-ended question, just what's the most important issue for the city of Salem to address right now? And they could have told us anything that they wanted. We listened to every comment. We typed in verbatim everything that they had to say, and then we quoted them into some categories. Couple of things to notice here. First, at least the way we quoted them in these broad categories, no one issue stands out. Okay? No one issue just jumps far and above everything else. Now, I'll say, I ask questions like this in a lot of communities and have been asking questions like this across the state for a long time, and there have been some notable changes that show up here. First, this question asked in 2008, I guarantee you, number one issue would have been jobs in the economy. Here, it's just 5 percent sort of lower of the tier, that sort of answers here. The other one we typically see in most communities is education. And education, again, 5 percent. So those are two things that sort of don't stand out, which are sort of interesting here in Salem. We broke these into these individual categories, so roads, potholes, infrastructure, homelessness and poverty, traffic congestion, public transportation, to try to tease out the differences. However, if we bucket them a little bit differently and just highlight the transportation ones, then we see that transportation sort of as a large category does stand out probably more than the rest of them. There are some differences in what is concerning, whether it's potholes or public transportation, but so taken together, that is consistent with the close-ended question I showed you on the previous slide about satisfaction. What's not on here, and not a surprise, is a police facility, right? Or a new civic center, or the other sorts of basic infrastructure that government has, and that's typical of every community that I'm in. We tend not to see that, and that's true here as well. Telling you that it's not for most voters the biggest issue that's on their mind. So we asked about a potential bond measure in a couple of different ways. We asked just the total cost and asked if they would support or oppose a bond measure with that language. I'll read it here in a moment. Then we asked again, giving sort of the cost to the individual, the property tax rate. Now, again, I know you're looking at different options, you're still talking about costs, so this was the best information that we had to go with in March, two months ago. But the total cost question, it was, the respondents were told, "The city of Salem is considering placing a bond measure on the November 2016 ballot to fund the construction of a new police facility. The cost of the bond is expected to be $81 million and to be paid with property taxes." So they were told that, then asked if they would support a bond or not. Then the follow-up question was, "The property tax rate for this bond is expected to be 54 cents per $1,000 of assessed value, or about $9 per month for a typical home with an assessed value of $200,000." So that was the info we gave them. So the total cost question, that's the top chart there. 52 percent so that they would support a bond, 44 percent so that they would oppose it. So a majority. When given more information about how it would affect individual property owners, it's 50 percent supported it and 47 percent opposed. So a bit of a drop, not a lot, but a bit of a drop. When I look at numbers like this, I'm always paying attention to two numbers. One is the total amount of support, and the other is the strong support. Things vary a lot. Every bond measure, every campaign is different based upon all sorts of factors that we could talk about. But generally speaking, initial support closer to 60 percent is the type of support you see at successful bond measures. Below that, then you know that a real robust community conversation needs to take place in order to get people to be interested and supportive of the idea. By no means do these numbers suggest that something's not possible, but it puts it in a different category, and something to be thoughtful of and considerate of is that this is, these are numbers that say, boy, we need to inform and engage the community. We can't assume that they're going to be eager to vote yes on this. Actually, before I go on, for those who are sort of keeping track of things like demographic breakdowns, Democrats tend to support this more than Republicans, the sort of traditional sort of breakdown we tend to see, about 20 percent more Democrats said that they're likely to support this than Republicans, about 60 percent Democrats, about 40 percent Republicans. What was interesting to me, though, frequent voters, those who tended to vote in all elections for four voters, that's the way pollsters tend to think of those things, people have voted in four of the last four elections, they were also more likely to support it. And so I know you're thinking November, and I'm not suggesting to do anything different, but if we think about election cycles and who's most likely to turn out, Democrats more likely to support a tax increase, no surprise there. But those who are most likely to vote also said that they're more likely to support this as well. And this, as we think about context of communicating and going forward with a campaign, it's important to know that those who are most likely to show up were also more supportive. All right, so we did ask about some features. We did our best to present these neutrally. It's always a difficult thing to do, and we try not to push people one way or the other. But we wanted to also find out from people, what were the most important features? What did they care about, both for planning purposes and thinking about going forward and trying to have a conversation with the community? And I want to start at the bottom here and then work our way up. So we asked them, we gave them this bit of information, which I'll share in a moment, and then asked, does that information make you much more supportive of the bond, somewhat more supportive, somewhat less supportive, much less supportive? And then if they told us it made no difference, or it wasn't more or less, we accepted those as answers as well. But if we focus on the blue parts of these bars here, those are the much more or somewhat more supportive. Knowing this would make them much more or somewhat more supportive of a bond measure. Well, of these, the one that sort of was the least persuasive was, design and estimates of the construction are done by an independent third party. That professionals are really looking into this, we're trying to give them that information, that they should have confidence because of that, this is a good design and appropriate. Well, it's the least of these. You had 39 percent saying, well, that information makes me somewhat more supportive. For most people, it made no difference. Doesn't mean that it's bad information, the public didn't care, it just, it wasn't something that motivated them. So there's that, and that's probably not surprising because it's not a service that's delivered to them. I will say, though, in the work that I've done, it's that sort of information that is a bedrock, a foundation to building public support. If it's not there, people will make arguments as a reason not to support it. So it's something that needs to be there, but it doesn't make them supportive in and of themselves. Moving up, "A new facility would be located north of downtown Salem now on vacant parking lots." There's two bits of information there, the location and what it's replacing. With regards to location, you know, downtown being centralized is something that voters did tell us that they supported, and it's important to them, but in a different context, we'll get into a moment. The third one up, "A new police facility will accommodate 40 years of population growth." Well, now we're getting to, you know, 58 percent saying that that bit of information makes them more supportive of bond measure. Next, "Centrally locating police services ensures faster public safety and response for entire community." There is that centrally located again, it's worded different. The other one said downtown, this one says centrally located. But being centrally located to deliver a service, fast response times, there, we have 60 percent saying that that information would make them more supportive. Moving up, "A new police facility will be built large enough to house all police needs under one roof." Another idea of being centrally located, different, one is in the community and being able to deliver response times. This is centrally located to house staff in one place. But there, you have 61 percent saying that that makes them more supportive. "A new facility will be built to modern seismic standards and able to serve the city in a major earthquake." 71 percent more supportive. And "A new police facility will be to meet today's and future needs." 73, excuse me, 63 percent. I think I, my eyes got a little blurry. So some real insight here, being able to meet future needs, being centrally located to the community with the goal of faster response times, being centrally located for staff so they can all work together, and being seismically sound, resistant in a disaster. Those are the things that voters really told us would make them more supportive of a So after we gave them that information and asked their opinions about them, we asked them one more time to tell us if they would support a bond or not. And again, remember, we asked about the total cost and the property value, and the retest, it was the total cost question we asked. And you can see the blue bars here represent the retest question, and the grayish means are the original numbers that I showed you before, just in a different sort of chart format. But you can see total support increased on the retest. Once people were given more information about the various features of the bond, support increased from 52 percent to 59 percent. I actually think it's 58 percent, it looks like 59 here with rounding, but so, you know, about six, seven percentage points more. But interestingly, look at the strong support, it goes from 26 percent to 35 percent. Now, again, when I look at numbers in a survey like this, generally, 60 percent total support is what I'm looking for to think that a measure is viable for success. While on the retest, it's 58. The other number I look at is strong support, and I usually want to see at least 30 percent strong support to think that something is viable. So here, on the retest, we really get close to that threshold, 58 percent, just a couple points below that, 60 percent I usually like to see, and 35 percent strong support. So there's, there are reasons to be hopeful, and there's some, I think, strong elements in terms of the features that we can really see that the public is interested in, makes them more supportive. And people definitely moved to be more supportive once they did learn more. Some cautions and caveats about this is we didn't, this is not a campaign poll. This is really an effort to learn where the public is beginning and to help understand the features that are important to them as you work towards the final designs. But we didn't test opposition messages. We didn't test arguments that people might make in a campaign against us, and that's just important in context as well. So how they might respond to those, I don't know, but it is important to acknowledge that, I think. So with that, those are the big highlights of the survey, and I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Okay, we're going to take some questions. I want to keep us on a kind of timeline this evening. I saw Councilor Nanki and then Councilor
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Norvick. 60 percent threshold, and in our case, 52 on the upfront. Do you look at that number then as 52 for the purposes of that 60 percent threshold?
Yeah, if I'm giving, you know, campaign advice, which is really not the sort of the place I want to be in, this was not the purpose of the survey, it was to inform you about where the community's at. But yeah, the 60 percent is usually on the cold test upfront. Some differences here, we didn't have a ballot title, there hasn't been a community conversation, all that sort of stuff in mind, but yeah, 60 percent upfront is usually what I'm looking at.
And the impact on that number, say, based on a strong negative campaign versus, you know, we did a Streets and Bridges bond, we did a fire bond, there wasn't a lot of people out voting against it, it was more just trying to get people to, you know, allocate property tax dollars that direction. Does that 60 percent threshold or move if you actually have an active
Sure. Well, that's why I say 60 percent and not 51 percent, because it's generally easier to move people to a no than it is a yes. It's just a general rule that may, or not apply to this particular circumstance, but that's why you generally want to see a number north of 50 early on, because you would anticipate that people will learn, as they learn information, if it's at all negative, it's easier to get somebody to move in that direction that is in a positive direction. So, you know, the, how people might respond to a negative campaign, in a normal circumstance, we would expect just that it's easier to move in that direction than the other.
Okay, thanks.
Councilor Dickey?
Thank you. I'm curious about the, just generally, the demographic and geographic breakout that you had. I'm interested in knowing, did you have representation from all parts of the city? If you, all sort of income levels, that kind of thing?
Sure. We tried to make the survey as representative as we could of the voting population in Salem, that included by age and by gender, by political affiliation, because we were using a registered voter list, and that's part of the registered voter record, as well as by area of the city. And in the report, we show all the different breakdowns by ward, so that's the way that we kept track of it. So we did our best to make it geographically representative, as well as those other ways I said as well about the sample.
Were there other questions? Councilor Anderson?
Thank you. You indicated that after the explanations were given, there was, as you termed it, a modest increase in support. I'm interested if you could comment on that particular term, modest. Was that, is it modest only in numbers, or is it modest because you expected that that information might have produced a stronger increase in support?
No, that's a good and fair question. So on most retests, we tend to see movement less than 10 percent for a variety of reasons. People have already given their opinion upfront, and so they need to really be persuaded about something to move. I would say, so we moved about 6, 7 percent total, and that's why I would say modest. It's less than that 10 percent that we typically don't see, but it's less than that sort of 10 percent where I'd say, boy, that's really something that's notable. On the other hand, strong support moved 10 percentage points. And so people really, those supporters really became solidified in their belief that this was a sound idea. And that's important, because, you know, in a campaign, you really got to have that base of people who are going to be there with you. But that's why I would say modest. It was, the total number didn't move all that much, but it was the strong support that solidified.
Another question, if I may, Mayor. One of the issues that you discussed was if this was combined with a public safety bond for retrofitting and earthquake-proofing the civic center campus. And I know you said that it didn't make much of a difference, but I'd like it if you could explain that whole aspect of it a bit.
I'm not sure I'm following the question.
Well, one of the questions that I saw was, would you be more inclined to support a bond measure if it included monies for earthquake-proofing the current city campus?
We asked, I didn't present it in the presentation, but we asked, here, let me just read the question, so everybody has the context, doesn't have to report. So the very last question before the demographics in the survey, I'll just read it verbatim. I think this is the question you're alluding to. "The cost of the new police facility is based on the best estimates of independent experts. City council is considering including a provision in the bond measure that if the final actual cost is less than $81 million, that the savings would be dedicated to make earthquake safety upgrades to the civic center and library. Would adding this provision to the bond measure make you more likely to vote yes to support it, or more likely to vote no to oppose it? If it doesn't make a difference, you can let me know that too. Asked that way, 49 percent said that it'd be more likely." Asked that way, 49% said that they'd be more likely to support it if they thought that there was extra, quote unquote, extra revenue dedicated to seismic safety.
Okay, is that 49% of both strong and, and somewhat, or?
Yes, that's combined. It's 29% much more likely, 20% somewhat.
And so the question really was, if there's money left over and it was going to be used for earthquakeing, not if we added to use something else for earthquake proofing, if we added to it. In other words, it was just, if there's something left over, we would use it for this, would that help you, as opposed to what if we combined a, a, one bond for two purposes, one earthquake proofing, and two, the police station? That question was not asked.
It was not asked. I don't expect that of people to respond. The only thing I would say is that there's some evidence here that knowing they would go to seismic safety for the civic center is, is a net positive. How strong, I don't think it's real strong, this suggests. And the other is that we know that seismic safety is an important feature that they're concerned about.
I have a question for clarification, if you would. Again, on that same question, but on those demographics, or on the, the numbers, yes, strongly, looks like it's 30, am I on the wrong page? Oh, I'm on the wrong page, all right. What page is your chart on that you're referring to?
In the report, on page 13.
13, thank you.
Question 21.
Oh, thank you, okay. All right, never mind my question, then. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, were there other questions from councilors? All right.
Thank you very much. And DHM is a resource if there's follow-up questions.
Appreciate you being here, thank you. We're going to shift now to staff and talk about the progress report. I believe Alan Dannen has information for us. Tell us where we are at this point.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Alan Dannen with Public Works Engineering. I'm here tonight to follow up on several items from the discussion at our last work session back in April, where some of the key items for more detail came up. One is two options, either including or excluding the Willamette Valley Communications Center on the smaller, just O'Brien, former O'Brien site. We'll also talk about some more information about kind of the economic analysis of including or excluding the WVCC, and, and then we'll finish up with parking. My intent is to keep this at a pretty high level. We have experts from our design team in the room, Tim Gany and Kirk Sun behind me, if more detailed questions come up afterwards. And we've got city staff from police, public works, and finance available as well.
Great. Alan, if you can be sure you speak into the microphone, that would be good.
Sure, sorry about that. Thanks. And I think most of you have them, but this first slide especially is a little bit hard to see and pick out the differences, so you do have handouts at your table that just allow you to take a closer look. So what we're contrasting here is two concepts, again, just on the O'Brien site, with or without the WVCC. And I want to just reiterate what we've said before. There's just been enough work done in this design effort to understand if the building can fit on the site, and give the cost estimator enough detail to go through and get a reasonable estimate of cost, and, and know that all elements of the building construction are accounted for. It's not fully designed, and there would be subsequent effort, if the bond passes, to, to reach that point and prepare bid-level documents. So just to contrast the two schemes, and keep in mind, I'm not an architect, I just play one at work sessions sometimes. Sorry about that. There we go, that's a little bigger. So really, the, what you see is, on the, on the top is the scheme that we produced in April without the WVCC, and on the bottom, we're including it. And the difference really is, it's still a four-story building, it's just each floor is a little larger. So the, the scheme and the concept, almost exactly the same. The things that don't change between the two, other than the general layout, the parking is 40 public spaces at the front of the building, and there's 175, that's kind of hard to read, secure spaces for police use at the ground level behind, and then each scheme has its own parking structure. 123 spaces without the WVCC, and 163 spaces in that structure with it.
163 with?
Correct.
With the WVCC. And how much without?
123, so an addition of 40.
Thanks.
Just a couple more details about the WVCC itself. It's about 23,000 square feet in the program that's been developed. About two-thirds of that is for the dispatch function, and about a third of it is for the Emergency Operations Center, or EOC, as we often refer to it. And I guess the other thing I wanted to point out about that is, our architects and our dispatch folks had long conversations about coming to that, to that size, and it includes 12 additional dispatch positions, so an increase of about two-thirds of what's there today, just in terms of actual dispatch traffic. And it includes a, a pretty fair expansion to what many of you have seen the EOC to what's there today. It's just a single room. This program would have breakout rooms at the side for section heads to get together, to brief, and some other supporting functions that we don't have in the existing facility. Without the WVCC, we still plan for an EOC to be in this facility. It just would overlay on top of either the training room or the community room, and would be kind of a secondary purpose to those uses. That can certainly work, but it wouldn't be quite as efficient as a standalone facility like, even like we have in the existing building. This next slide just summarizes the cost. It's the same, same numbers that you have in your staff report, just with the two options compared side by side. One thing I just want to point out, the cost categories here that our estimator developed are the three related to hard construction. So there's the building, the parking structure, and then the site and demolition of existing structures. All the rest are essentially percentages of those construction costs, based on the research that we've done, or the opinion in the cost estimator. The one exception is the property acquisition number, which we've developed from looking at the assessed values and comps in the neighborhood. The difference between the two is essentially, a smaller building saves you about 10 million, and a smaller parking structure saves you about 1.8. So the total difference, about 11 and a half million dollars. So moving on to a little bit more about the WVCC.
Councilor Bennett, you have a question?
Yeah, just on that slide, is that, can we do it that way, just as we go past?
Sure, if you see something, you have a particular question.
Yeah, on the site demolition and construction, why is it higher for the reduced program than the recommended program? I just, or am I just looking at that wrong?
Yeah, it's a different price.
Thank you. So this, because you have a smaller parking structure, there's more site to develop, pave, landscape, et cetera. So it shifts higher parking structure.
Okay.
And a little bit lower site cost.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
So the WVCC, David Lacy from Finance did a pretty extensive analysis, and I'll do my best to, to summarize what we learned here. But David's here to answer questions afterwards if, if there's more detail desired. So.
If I may, Alan, we were, again, directed by council to really look, do a more thorough cost-benefit analysis on, on the staying put, including in the police facility, or constructing at some point in the future, a new standalone 911 center. And this is what we've summarized for you.
Correct, and it's really tried, our best attempt to analyze the economics of the, of the options. So one thing just to point out, in order to make it a fair comparison, we compared construction of some different scenarios against leasing an equally sized facility. So we know that, and it's in the staff report, that in about 10 years, the existing building is going to be too small. So we know, I mean, the cash, or the economics would look better if we could just continue to use that same building and pay our existing rate, but we know that's only going to last about 10 years. So what we did is, we compared our construction scenarios against leasing the same-sized facility at the same rate, so 23,000 square feet, and then assumed that that lease cost escalates at 2.5% per year. So similar to the terms we have now, just for a bigger facility. And what we compared that against was building the WVCC into the building for that 11.11 and a half million dollar cost difference that we showed on the previous slide, versus an estimated cost of building it as a standalone facility today, which is really just based on that same number, and some additional assumptions for purchasing and developing a site for a standalone facility. I think after some subsequent discussion, this number might be a little bit low, so the payback on it might shift out a little bit, but it's in the neighborhood. And then we looked at, what if we wait till 10 years from now, and what, what, what would happen then if we start construction of the new facility? So what you have here is the estimated cost, and just figuring escalation on construction, you're looking at, instead of 11 million dollars today in the facility, 20 million dollars 10 years to build a standalone site. The total debt service, calculated for 4.5% at 20 years, comes to the totals that you see here, so obviously, waiting 10 years adds quite a bit to that. And then we looked at the cash flow, so comparing those lease payments to the debt service payments. And what you see on the next slide is, so as you're paying debt service, you're paying more than what the lease payments would be, so you go further into the hole as the, and this is just adding up each year's expenses. There's no time value of money or anything like that figured in, it's just a rough way to gauge. So, and then when you reach that 20-year horizon, and you pay off your debt service, then your lease payments obviously are more than your debt service, and you start to climb back out of the negative. And so what we saw there is, in 30 years, you would have paid back the cost in the building roughly 31, or maybe a little longer if the cost of a standalone facility today is more if you build it essentially at the same time. If you wait 10 years, your payback extends out another seven or eight years.
Councilor McCoy, followed by Councilor Bednarz, and then Councilor Lewis, and then Councilor Anderson.
Few questions, Alan. First, with, so you're assuming then that the EOC would be in the new WVC building, if it was built separately?
Correct. We would just use that same square footage.
But so the EOC would be there and not in police headquarters?
Right.
That's what you're saying? Because somewhere in here, I thought, under the, if we went the smaller size, the EOC would still be in the police headquarters, but they'd be using the community center in the event that there was an emergency.
Correct. It would be, it wouldn't be as, as adequate of a, of a facility as what we would, was what we would do, is if we built it with the.
I understand that, but, but the question was, if we took the WVCC out, took it out, this, in this document, it says EOC would still be at police headquarters. And so you're now putting the WVCC as a standalone facility, and using the same 23,000 square feet, of which roughly 7,500 is, is in the police facility, would be for EOC, and coming up with these numbers, where I would think if that's the case, it'd be 16.5, and it'd be much less, and this whole numbers would change.
Sure. So if, so if I understand your question, what you're saying is, if we made the decision to reduce, I mean, we're still going to build 23,000 in the existing, but if we reduce the, the cost, let's say by a third, right? Because it's roughly a third of the program, just for, so you'd reduce this number to around 8 million, 8 and a half million, and you'd reduce this number to, call it 14, somewhere in there, by roughly a third, 13 or 14. So you're right, that would change these calculations, but, and David, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, the number for waiting 10 years would still pay back in longer time than building within the facility. If we built it today for a cost of 8 million dollars, it might pay back less, but the longer you wait, the worse that calculation gets. Does that make sense?
I get that, yeah. I understand that, yes. If you built, if it's a separate building, would, would the city bear the whole price of, of building that building? Or would they be recouping some of that money from the fees that they're charging all the other folks that we service?
So this analysis is based just on the cost of the facility. We do get fees from the, the other member agencies now, and the chief or Mark Buckles could speak in more detail to this. We would continue to do that if they moved into a new facility, either in the building or standalone facility.
Exactly.
And that, those payments, instead of paying to go against our rent, could go against our debt service.
So, was that answer, if we build a standalone facility and we're using, I don't know what our number is, a third of it's ours, or half of, whatever the, how do we divide up the percentages now on our charging fees? Would, would, in other words, whether you say, you got to help us build the building, or we say, we'll build the building, and your, your fees are going to go up for help, you're going to help us pay through your percentage what it costs us to build the building? Would that in fact happen? I guess it's still my question. Would that occur?
The, the cost of the building, the cost of space, whether it's in the existing facility, whether it's in a new police facility, or whether it's in a standalone 911 center, is part of the charge to the member agencies, which is really based upon a methodology of our total costs and, and, and a percentage of the calls. And beyond that, Chief Moore can provide additional detail. That is the current way we charge the, the member agencies. It's a contract, all of the costs are included and are allocated based, to those members, based upon their usage, basically, the number of calls we receive from that jurisdiction.
Jury Member, Chief of Police, I want to make sure I understand your question, and part of it may be, who bears the cost of building a new facility? I, I think that's where you're going. I'm going to guess, I would believe, that one member agency would probably be responsible for the bond measure to build a new facility. And my guess would be, since Salem Police and Salem Fire are the biggest users of that, that most agencies would look to Salem to fund that bond. Once, once that facility is built, and we haven't had any real discussion with any of our other agencies that, that, that work with us, I believe they, they would say they would continue to pay rent, but that's something that we would look at in the future, depending on where it is. There's other, I'm going to guess there's other models that could be used. You may, and this has not been discussed, you may provide free rent where they bear the cost of the personnel, or, or there's other ways to, to utilize and, and staff and fund a 911 center. But I believe, in answer to your original question, one agency would have to be responsible to build it.
Well, yeah, okay, I understand that. I'm just saying, at some point, are you recouping some of the costs from the other folks that are using the facility for the cost of building the new facility?
Absolutely. If, if we were to build it, you could consider perhaps the rent, or you could, if you did that, you would have to, you'd probably come up with some agreement prior to building that, building what the other member agencies are going to do.
Okay. I guess, you know, I think you'd say I'm not, I'm pretty transparent when it comes to questions. I'm going, you're saying, oh, here's the cost, and I'm going, okay, well, we got an EOC thing in here, so take a third off. And then I'm going, we've got some percentage is going to be brought by other agencies outside the, outside of the city, probably, cutting the cost further, at which point, and I guess it goes both ways, it would be the same in the, in the police facility as outside of But, okay, I guess I'm done. I, it seems to me, the standalone facility, if the EOC's not in there, is still going to be less expensive than stick it in the WVC with the, with the, with it in. to be less expensive than stick it in the WVC with the, with it in there, so.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that. If the EOC remained, if a new facility was built and the EOC was in that, the, the size of a new 911 center would be smaller.
Are you done? Okay. All right. Counselor Bednarz, and then, okay, Lewis, and then Counselor Dickey.
Thank you very much for providing this, this new document this evening that was on our desk. We didn't have this one earlier. It really does answer the question that the staff report didn't have, or at least it gives me a, a trail on this cost-benefit analysis. So, I went back and simply said, if you excluded the WVCC, we're saving roughly 11.5 million dollars, or it will cost us 11.5 million dollars to put it into the, to the system. I was hoping maybe to talk to somebody, you mentioned somebody in staff that had put this together, and most particular, what I was looking at was the fact that if I took 11.5 million dollars, and I used just a standard amortization schedule of 20 years at 4.5%, which are the givens that you had, had put down here, we're talking of $58,000 a month payment just for the WVCC center. Right now, we're paying 14,300, basically, $14,300. It's a difference of 44,000. However, you're paying for a lot more than just that, and I wanted to just ask the question a little bit more, flush that issue out. How does that get paid back in 30, 31 years?
I think it might be best for David to take a crack at that question. But, but what I understand it to be is, if, if we're paying 58,000 a year on the-
58,000 a month, actually.
58,000 a month, excuse me, versus 14,000 a month for the lease, we go out 20 years, and then the debt stops, but the lease continues, how does that balance out?
Yeah, so David Lacy from Finance. So, one of the things that we did need to do is, we looked at the lease a few different ways. So, if you're just truly comparing a 10,168 square foot facility, which they're currently in, to a larger, in this case, 23,000 square foot facility, it's really an apples-to-oranges comparison. So, what we tried to do is, look at the lease a few different ways. We looked at it at the smaller route, the 10,168. We looked at it, looking at stepping up the square footage about every 10 years through growth. And then the method that we decided to do for the comparison here was to actually gross up that lease to the 23,000 square feet, applying the same current lease per square foot cost to it, to come up with what that is, and that lease turns out to be around 420,000 or so a year. Once you do that, then you start comparing it to the debt service schedule. So, what you're looking at on the graphs that we were showing was basically taking that expense of the lease, taking the difference of what it would be for debt service, and coming up with that cumulative cash difference over time. So, what you see is that it continues to decline over the first 20 years, because it's the term we're using for debt service. And as Alan was explaining earlier, as that grows, goes up, we get to that break-even point. And the main difference is, the escalators are a little bit different, too. The lease escalator is about 2.5% versus the debt service cost being higher. So, it's, the escalator on the lease is definitely a little bit lower, which makes that payback a little bit longer. And we've looked at it from a net present value standpoint, to discounting those cash flows, you know, over that portion by the 4.5% too, and, you know, you get to positive net present value a little bit longer, about the 40-year mark, when you start discounting the cash flows. But, I'm not sure if that was the answer that you needed there, but that's the process that we wanted to go through on that.
Yeah, it's exactly the answer I was looking for, that you had looked at net present value, that you had gone out and looked at, at everything that's here. I, I note that it's at 30 years, you're breaking even, at 40 years is the planned life of this facility.
Right.
You're, you're paid off before it's, before we really have to go out and build something else.
Right.
So, thank you for the answer. That's exactly, exactly what I was looking for.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions about the current WVCC facility, and you mentioned that best it would be good for 10 years. Is that because of the building, or is that because of the capacity issue? Why is that?
It's a capacity issue. We believe that, clearly, in the future, we're, we're certainly right now talking about consolidation with Metcom, which is the 911 center in Woodburn, which they're invested in. And I believe in the next 10 years, it's very possible that there would be additional consolidations as PSAPs decide that it's cheaper and better to be one facility rather than four or five.
And my other question, the current facility, seismically, how does that stack up currently?
Current facility is, it meets public safety standards right now.
So, as far as a major earthquake, it could withstand hell high?
It was reinforced when the state of Oregon was using it as a, as their emergency communications center.
Counselor Dickey. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor Dickey.
Counselor Dickey.
Right? Okay, Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. So, I just want to be clear on these assumptions, because every time we've had this discussion about this, you know, I, I don't hear about, here's all these other agencies that are partnering with us, unless it comes from us asking about it. I want to be clear that, in these assumptions, we're assuming no other revenue comes from anybody else, and this is all our, our deal on our dime, correct?
Well, I would rephrase that slightly. It's a gross. We're showing the, the gross cost. We haven't netted it out based upon what the other, other agencies pay. This is to try to provide, as, as was said earlier, an apples-to-apples comparison, which is why we did not exclude the EOC. Each of these is 23,000 square feet, each of these is the gross estimated construction cost.
So, thank you for that. So, when we talk about a break-even point, though, that only talks about revenue we would get through a bond, and it doesn't include any other revenue we would get from any of the partner agencies? Is that correct, or am I not understanding that?
I think, the way I think about it is, there's a team that's contributing this, right? And as the chief stated, the city is going to front likely and take the lead and issue the debt, but then, the payments are going to come from us and the member agencies. And so, when we break even, it's because of all that contribution. Whether that matches exactly everybody's equal share, I think has to do with how the rates get set, but did that answer your question?
It kind of does. I mean, I understand, it's, you know, it's, it's the same amount of money, no matter how you slice it. I guess I'm trying to have a sense for, how do we get to that break-even point? I mean, is it 30 years, if we carry the whole thing, versus we carry half of it and our partner agencies pay half of it? Seems like it would get paid quicker if we paid, you know, had our, I don't, I don't know. That's the part I'm not understanding, is if we're getting contributions, either it gets paid off quicker, or the cost to the taxpayer is less, because we're getting contributions from our partner agencies. So, that's the part I'm not quite understanding, trying to figure out how that fits into the whole context of the larger picture we're talking about, including it in the police facility, or even as a standalone.
Let me touch a little bit on that. As Alan said, the cost will be borne by the city if we build the facility, but as we consolidate, you have to remember, the more agencies there are, the less the city of Salem pays, because it's one facility and one size, and the more agencies that pay into it, the less the city of Salem Police and Fire pay, because they become a smaller percentage of the total.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I'm going to follow up on this question. That's exactly right. Right now, if it's the scenario on the far right, that we will break even after 37 years, does that count the contributions of the other agencies that are going to be paying rent to us?
So, I'll try and take this one. Perhaps I probably used the wrong term with break even, but just so we can be clear about what we're talking about with break even, with the analysis that we did, we're truly just comparing the lease cost, the lease expense, to the debt service expense. I did not try and put together a model that took, took into consideration revenue streams and everything else. This is truly looking at the cost of constructing a building versus leasing a facility.
So, it has nothing to do, there's no, no calculation in here for the rent we are getting?
So, the rent is an operating revenue at this point for the current building. So, what we're looking at-
Is that, sorry, David, is that a yes or a no? There's no calculation in this for the rent we're getting?
There's no revenue calculation.
Okay. So, I don't know how much the other agencies pay, but let's say they, they pay a third of it, you know, their rent is paying a third of the cost. Will that reduce this, the payoff time? Will be able, will, would we be able to use the rent to, to reduce the bond indebtedness for the debt service?
Yeah, I mean, that would be an operating decision. I mean, what we're looking at here is-
Yeah.
Different revenue streams.
Yeah.
So, we're looking at either a-
Yeah, so, it's, it's, it's income that we could use however, however we wanted it to.
It's, it's income that would apply to each of those three scenarios.
Yeah, yeah, but it doesn't show that here. To me, this thing says, gee, we're going to be paying for this, we're going to be paying the full price for this for 37 years till we reduce it, but in reality, a certain percentage of that is going to get paid by the agencies that are leasing the building from us.
As would a certain percentage of the WVCC and the police facility in each of the three.
Right, right, right. I, I understand that, but, but I'm just looking and saying, it seems, the 37-year payout, when you figure that some, a significant percentage of that is being paid by somebody else, it looks a lot better to me in terms of building it some other way. Yeah, I, I'm happy to have people follow up on this question, because I've got some others.
I'm seeing a lot of hands raised here. I want to be careful to be sure I take everybody in order, but are we going to have just one response, or do you want to go ahead and ask your various questions about this particular issue?
No, I've asked my questions about this issue, but I think other people have questions about this particular issue.
That's what I'm thinking. So, do we want to spiel through those questions?
Yeah. No, no, no. I want to, I want to resolve this issue, because I'm now the third or fourth person who's asked these questions.
I know, and there's several more that are-
We still understand where we are.
Questions. Okay, let's go ahead to staff and see if we can get a definitive answer. But, I'll come back to all of you, of course.
No, I don't know that I'm going to give the answer that resolves all of, of the questions here, but I think one thing you have to, to keep in mind is, this was purely kind of a break-even analysis without regard to the specifics of where the revenue comes in, who's making the payment. But, keep in mind, as, as this analysis was put together, it's assuming that all the agencies combined are making this lease payment. So, while you don't see specific amounts allocated to each agency, when we're leasing the facility, we're all bearing that cost. So, just in, in the same manner, as the facility's constructed, we look at the allocated space to the city of the EOC, the other portions that are a specific city, we wouldn't allocate those costs to the member agencies, but the portion of the space being used by those agencies, and the number of agencies, we could come up with some formula and have an agreement with them for an amount of a lease payment that could in turn then be used to reduce the debt service, perhaps reduce the number of years on the, the payment of the bonds, or perhaps reduce the amount that we have to levy in the outgoing years. So, there are various ways to, to look at it, but we don't have any specifics as to what the contributions are. This was purely, if you're going to lease at this rate, or bond at this rate, when you break even over that period of time.
All right. Now, let's see who has questions. Counselor Bennett, Counselor Dankey, Counselor McCoy.
Well, just trying to understand this, because I, I think I understand why you presented it the way you did. I mean, it's perfectly logical, but is, is part of what's going on here that this actually translates income from a bond to a general fund? I mean, we're taking, we're taking essentially bond funds and translating them into operation funds? Is that kind of what's happening inside this? The way this is coming back to us, it's coming back to us as operational dollars, and you're not indicating here that it's, it's not in any way obligated to the bond, so you're not-
That's correct.
Pretending like it's obligated to the bond.
That's correct.
So, it becomes fully discretionary to the next, to the councils each year that that comes in for allocation to police services, or to any other library, or anything else.
Right.
You're sort of monetizing this bond fund.
The, the cost of, of the facility is part of the overall cost of operations-
Right.
-that are allocated to the member agencies.
Is there any way to, if you were to, can you dedicate those funds to bond repayments so that it actually would show up here that way, or is that just the wrong way to look at this thing?
Sandra, do you-
Sandra Montoya, Financial Services Administrator. I, I don't know that I would recommend doing something like that, because you have no contractual obligation for a 20-year period-
Right.
...with those member agencies. So, if our voters were approving a bond repayment, it would be a general obligation, what would be general obligation? So, what we could do, though, is absolutely take in that revenue, you could apply it however you wish. We would probably recommend that it would be applied towards the rent, and so then the following year, we would levy less. However, modeling, that's not how we would model it.
Right.
Just because there's too many variables, you could have a member agency that decides to pull out and start their own agency altogether. We would have zero control over that. So, being the most conservative, we would say, what would this cost the Salem residents?
Right.
And then, again, that money coming in, we could apply, that revenue, we could apply appropriately. The most appropriate would, would be to reduce the levy, and it would be reduced the subsequent year.
This is the most accurate representation of the obligation of the taxpayers of Salem?
Correct.
Okay, that's-
Correct.
Yeah, I, I think, I do understand, I think I understand it now. Thank you.
That was the question I was going to ask, thank you.
Counselor Dankey, oh, it's all right, okay. Counselor McCoy?
I'll ask a couple of questions first. Don't want to give a talk speech here. What would the, so, if it's in the police facility, what would the EOC, that square footage, which is 7,500 square feet, what would it look like? Where would it be? What would it be used for? Just curious now, I mean, you've got this 20,000, 30,000 square foot area with a third-
Where is it now?
Well, I'm just saying, if we build it and it's 7,500 square feet in the building, plus we've got extra square feet waiting to be used, but it's there in case there's an emergency, what's it used for on a daily basis? Or is it just sitting there to be used?
Could you restate the-
Okay. We're sitting and talking, I'm talking about the, in the police facility, if we had the WVCC in there, and I was heard, two-thirds of it would be used, basically, two-thirds would be used for operations at some point, one-third would be, would be the emergency operations center. Well, that only kicks in if there's an emergency, which is not, not the norm, so on a daily basis, what does that look like? Is it just space sitting there waiting for an emergency? Are we using it for something else?
It is joint.
I think the architect, you can answer where is it planned in the facility, and the chief can speak to the use on a day-to-day basis, or non-use on a day-to-day basis.
I'll start. Counselor, I believe it's about, I'm trying to remember, about 1,700, maybe 1,705 is dispatch space, and about 5,500 is emergency operations center. That includes, I believe, some breakout rooms and storage areas and such for the emergency operations center. Currently, it is, as you know, because we've had meetings in there, it's, it's attached to the dispatch center, and while not used as an emergency operations center, it's used for training, for WVCC, it's used for meetings, and it's used for a variety of, some city meetings that occur there. But, if I understand your question, I, there is a possibility that it's empty space at sometimes, that's not being utilized when WVCC isn't training people, or there are no meetings going on there.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question on, you were talking about staffing for the new center, I mean, if there's more consolidation and for, you know, became regional and all those kinds of things. When, when we had the estimate of how many new WVCC employees we would have, which I think was 12, is that right? Whatever the number was you gave us earlier? Does that include that, or is this just with what we have now?
We currently have 18 work consoles. That, that isn't the number of employees, because obviously, that, that changes. The new facility- The new facility added 12 consoles, I believe. So, I will just give you a description of current. If Metcom were to come in, in the next couple of years, which I believe is a really good possibility, that in and of itself would take at least six more consoles for us to be able to dispatch for the 29 police and fire agencies in the Woodburn area. So, when you look at adding 12, over the course of 30 or 40 years, you're not really adding a huge amount to the, to the dispatch center, because six of them could be taken up in the next couple of years.
Okay. A comment, this is just my comment, I, I'm a little perplexed that we, we're trying to get a handle on standalone versus in the police facility, and we get a number here that really isn't representative of standalone, because it's overstating with EOC out of there, so these numbers get smaller. Now, I guess if you look at a 10-year delay, I'm assuming, and I'm not doing the math, it looks like a 10-year delay, it would still be cheaper to put it in now than not, but not by a lot, if you take a third out. I'm just, I'm just eyeballing math and doing my, you know, my high school trig stuff here, so I might make sure I'm sorta close, but it looks to me like it would be more expensive, but not a lot more expensive.
It's expensive.
Well, no, 'cause you divide, if you take a third of it out of there, you're now at 14 million to build it.
17,500 rather than the...
So, it'd be more expensive. So, just, just to clarify, if you are gonna commit to taking the full EOC out of that WVCC, you, you would, if you want an EOC, you'd have to put it back into the police station? Does that make...
It's dual use.
Some of it's dual use, but there, there's about 3,000 square feet that, that is dual use of the five, so you'd, you'd have to put some square footage back into the police station if you want an EOC.
Well, I think we need an EOC, but I, I was referring to the report here that basically said if it's, if the WVCC wasn't in there, then that you'd be using the community center and some other things if, in case, you know, the need for it came up. Maybe I misread it, but that, that was sort of my understanding.
If I'm tracking you, I think you're, you're correct. If we built a new facility and we utilized a community room or a training room as the EOC, as Tim said, there may be some square footage that you'd have to put in there for storage or whatever it might be, but the footprint of WVCC, just the dispatch center that you would be building, would be smaller.
That's it. I'm done.
Are there other questions? Counselor Anderson.
This is always the danger of ceding the floor to somebody else. Yeah, I wanna shift the focus a bit. I've been going to some neighborhood group meetings, and these are some questions for Mr. Ganey, so you, I'm saying you should probably stay up there. I've been going to neighborhood group meetings where we've been discussing this, and one of the constituents asked, what's the situation with ceiling heights? Do we look at ceiling heights? And I said, you know, we've only been talking about square footage, not cubic footage, so I'm wondering, what is, what do they plan for? Is that, is that the right height? Should they be higher? Should they be lower? Does that reduce, if they're 12-foot or 14-foot ceilings and they're reduced somewhat, does that reduce the cost, or how do we look at that?
It, it would reduce the, the cost, it would be incremental. We've organized the, the police station in a manner in which you could have lower ceilings on more of the office dedicated sort of areas, but there would be a need for higher ceilings in certain other areas, like the ground floor would need to be higher. We would recommend 15-foot floor-to-floor, or 16 maybe even on the lower level, 'cause you might have larger spaces, especially if you have the community room, 'cause it's a space like this.
So, in other words, you have, in your planning, at least to this point, you've, you've taken into account what the height of the ceiling might be needed for whatever use that might be, might be utilized.
That's correct, and the cost model actually represents that, because they did a sort of area analysis of the building being X feet high in order to calculate their square footage or area of the skin in order to come up with the cost.
Then, I've also heard this from a number of people, some people who have testified here, other people, you know, who send emails to the council and stuff. What is construction management, general contract system, and is that something you would utilize? And does that, does that, does that achieve cost savings or not? And how does that calculate into the figures that we receive from your cost estimator?
There's a number of different delivery models that you could recommend. It could be a design bid build, which is your traditional method. You can have a CMGC, which is a construction manager, general contractor, and, or you could do a design build. So, there's, there's different avenues you can take with the cost model. With our cost model, actually, it's counting on our actual cost estimate. I'd have to pull up the actual cost estimate, but...
Which model did you use in arriving at this?
It's design bid build.
Okay.
Which, which is gonna give you, in theory, the best price.
Really?
It's gonna be the most competitive price, is what we're seeing right now. We just bid a job, actually, we just did two projects with the exact same building, it's a prototype. One was CMGC, one was design bid build, and the design bid build was about 18% lower. So, that, we went with, with sort of, I think, a, a more valued, a, a number that's gonna give you more value.
Okay. So, and I know we've heard this all the time about the comparison between the various other buildings that have been built specifically, the state police facility, and I, Counselor McCoy was talking about this the last time we were discussing this matter, and I understand that there are, there are different functions, and there's only 40 state troopers there as opposed to 175, 190 sworn officers here, but there seems to be a pretty huge difference in the square footage cost. As I look at this, the state police, when you look at the size, the construction, and the development cost, look to me to be about $250 per square foot, but the proposal, for the bigger proposal, the 148 square thousand foot, comes up to $561,000 per square foot for this facility, not looking at, you know, so I'm wondering if we could really say, or we could really describe and discuss, and I think this is something for the chief too, what is the difference between the state facility and the city facility that increases the cost so much per square foot? You know, we've heard that, you know, it doesn't, we have different needs and we're not the same thing, but exactly what are those?
Well, I think, first, one is, I think up to 40 troopers will be reporting out of that building, we'll have 190 officers. Second, the state police building is a lease purchase. The state police, the state of Michigan does not own the building or the land, and I don't know what, I don't...
You usually don't say that till like, close to 10 o'clock, not 8 o'clock.
I, I don't know the, the source of your information, but our, our cost, as Alan said earlier, it's, it's everything. It's the furnishings, it's the contingency, it's an escalation. It's a, it's a conservative estimate of what the cost is, and as Tim said, it's also based upon the delivery model that typically for local governments provides the, the lowest cost, you know, the low bid approach to, to public projects. And I, I don't think that was the approach taken by the, the state of Oregon. And the chief can go into more detail regarding the differences between the state police, fish and wildlife, I believe the fire marshal is in there as well, and the Salem Police Department.
I think the biggest difference is, the state police building is an office building, and it's designed to be an office building, and when the state police move out, some business is gonna move into it, and they're gonna use it as an office building. We're trying to build a police facility that's gonna last just 30, 40, 50 years, and has the amenities that are needed for 230, 240 police officers. It has the safety and security that a police department, designed to be a police department, actually needs. And we, I mean, I, we could get into specifics about locker rooms and, and interview rooms for detectives and holding cells. I would almost guarantee you that the building that the state police have has very few of those things, and I think that's the big difference. And, and I'm not an expert on this, and some of the others will talk about it too, but prevailing wage, I think, is a big thing, because we're building this, the city's building this, the state police building was built by a business, and they're just...
Sure.
They're just leasing it, so there's a difference in cost.
Well, thank you very much for that explanation, both Mr. Powers and Chief Moore, because I see, and Mr. Ganey, because I see this, I'm going back now to the, to the polling stuff we had about education, because we're gonna need a good explanation as why this building costs more per square foot than the other buildings that have been built in terms of police facilities, and that's gonna be part of an education we're gonna need on a campaign. So, that's why I'm asking you those questions now, so we can start to get that stuff up, out.
Yeah.
I, I do have another line of questioning, Mayor, and this is for you, Tim. When I'm looking at the building construction on the material we were given tonight, where, you know, it goes from the recommended program to the reduced program, the difference between the building construction of 44 and 1/2 million to just over 38 million, you know, is $6.5 million, but then when I go to the next page and say, the estimated construction cost of the WVCC and the police facility is $11,500,000, so how do we only have a difference in building construction cost of $6 million in the two, when we've said it would cost $11 million to build it inside?
I can answer that one, Counselor. So, the, the $6 million difference is just the difference in raw construction, but then you have to apply parking and all the other cost factors that apply to the general building, so the portion of design, the contingency, the, all the, all the cost factors you see there all have a percentage that tack onto that.
Excuse me, Alan, all the cost faster, factors we see in, in the page up on the board are all the cost factors we don't see in the construction scenarios for the WVCC?
Right, it's all, it, all the, all the factors on the board there are rolled up into that 11 and 1/2 million, so that's the net cost of building or not building.
So, is that 11 and 1/2 million, the, the cost figure that we get, you know, between the 81 million and the 70 million, that's the same number?
Yes.
So, you're taking that, the, the $6 million difference in building construction, and there's $5 million other costs that are, that are allocated here to end up with the $70 million?
Right. You're gonna reduce the share...
Yeah, yeah, I see that, I see that, yeah, yeah. So, you know, in the ratio of, of, of 6 to 11, you're gonna be reducing the other things going down there by that same ratio.
Exactly, right.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's all I have about this, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Were there other questions from counselors? Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mayor, just a quick one, because prevailing wage always drives me crazy. What is the difference if this were not a prevailing wage job?
It, it's pretty significant. It can be upwards of 20%, but it being a public facility, it's, you don't have that option, obviously. It could be actually even more than 20%. So, that, that is something that you could take as, I think the key thing here is to find an apples-to-apples comparison.
Right.
So, if you really look at police facilities that are getting built here, even in Oregon, and you do an apples-to-apples comparison, the cost per square foot that you're seeing for yours is gonna be the same as the others.
Passed on to our taxpayers.
Correct, just, yeah, yes.
All right. Other questions from counselors regarding this particular item on the agenda, which has to do mostly with the 911 call center? Leave it in, take it out, and then the considerations about the emergency operations center? Any, any more questions about that? Okay, then we'll move to the parking need section. Alan, is that you also? Okay.
So, now that the EZU stuff is out of the way, we'll just tackle parking real quick.
Oh, boy.
So, what I've done here is just kind of resummarized the, the same information that's in your staff report, Alan, in one place, and after the discussion last time, I need to point out that Deputy Chief Belshaw led a heroic effort to evaluate our current parking need, really shift by shift, hour by hour, to really truly understand what, what kind of parking need we have today. And that's represented in the right-hand column on the table up on the screen, is our, is our current demand. And, you know, what, and what, what that came up to was pretty close to, to the same numbers we had originally when we first looked, talked about parking back in February. But this is based on a recent and very thorough analysis by Chief Belshaw and his staff. It's, as stated in the staff report, it's a very complex and dynamic situation. It varies from day-to-day, shift-to-shift, hour-to-hour, but at the peak time between 3:30 and 4:30 PM, if the WVCC's included, you have 14 different shifts that all have a need for parking during that time, and so there's a, there's a huge peak demand, and that's, again, the number that you see on the right-hand side. So, what we've done is just compare that against what each scheme would provide, and I provided the code requirement there just for reference, it's one for every 500 square feet, just to show kinda where that, where that fits into the picture. I think the key takeaways are, you can't meet anywhere close to the current need in either scheme, or for that matter, the code requirement, if you just rely on surface parking at this site. So, some structure is required, and that structure's important too for how the building functions. We talked about this last time, having that second-level vehicular access really helps the building operate efficiently, so that you don't have some elements, whether it's patrol or evidence or whatever, having to negotiate either elevators or a flight of stairs to do their work. So, it's important that way, too. The way the structure got sized was not so much, okay, what's our demand? Let's exactly match it. It's what's an efficient size for each scheme, and so when we looked at adding the WVCC in, what kind of structure difference would you need? It's really just adding two bays of parking, and so that's why it's a nice round 40, because that would be the most efficient way to do it. If you tried to cut five spaces or so out of that, you wouldn't necessarily cut an equal amount of cost out, because you're still building all the same foundations and everything else. So, really, what you see here is, each scheme meets the current demand with a little bit left over, but if you think about a 40- or 50-year life of the building, that demand will probably get used up over that time, and we'll have to think about other options, and we've talked about what those could be. There's certainly areas around where we could work out arrangements to lease parking that's close to the facility, or there's the parking, the Marion Parkade.
Counselor McCoy?
Out of curiosity, we've got a current demand of 355, right? I'm assuming that means that's what we have right now. Where do they park now? They're sure not parking on-site. Where are they at? I'm just, that's more curious to some degree, but maybe apropos of what we're doing here, since we're trying to get all the parking there.
So, the current demand includes WVCC, who is parking on their site.
Got it.
But they also have on-street parking, and they're having to, that, they don't have enough parking for their demands. We have officers that are parking below the civic center, and paid parking, and paid parking across the street at Windows to the West, and then we have employees that are parking, you know, up and down Commercial and Liberty and walking in right now.
You need to also keep in mind, that includes all the department vehicles as well, and most, most of them are on-site, but not all of them. Some of them park at Windows to the West, some of them park at the shops, so our vehicles are spread throughout the city, basically.
Other questions regarding the parking? Yes, Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Does this continue to have, then, I, I recall the, I, I thought it was interesting, the structure brings cars up to a second floor where there's an entrance. That all remains the way it was?
Yes, in, in either case. Yes, in either case, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I'd like to talk a bit about the Marion Parkade, and the discussion in the staff report, and so I don't know who, the parking alternatives discussion's on page six and seven of the report, and I don't know who would be the staff person that I should be speaking with.
It depends on the question.
Okay, well, then I'll ask the questions. As we discussed in the past, first I'll make a few statements, as we discussed in the past, the peak hour occupancy, that is from one to two PM at the Marion Parkade, is forty percent. So that's peak hour for that one hour of twenty-four, and so the rest of the time, the average occupancy has to be less than forty percent of a thousand, so less than four hundred spaces. So it says, six-hundred-and-twenty-eight of the spaces in the parkade are designated for customer parking. Now, and this might actually be a case, a question for the Director of the Urban Development Department, who I see is here in the back, I understand that the downtown parking, the downtown merchants pay a certain parking fee for the number of spaces we have available. So would it be possible to say to them, gee, instead of six-hundred-and-twenty-eight spaces that are assigned to paid parking down there, you will have five-hundred spaces, which gives us a hundred-and-twenty-eight spaces to use, and then reduce the assessment by whatever the percentage of spaces we had before that they were paying for versus spaces we have now that they're paying for?
Kristin Rutherford, Urban Development Director, I think that the more likely approach would be, as we look at the system-wide, is we don't look at the parking tax on a, on a parking structure by parking structure basis, we look at it as it applies to the entire system.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the total number of spaces available.
And so that, the number of spaces then fluctuates depending on how many permits we sell in one facility versus another facility. So I think what we would do is look at the offset on the permit revenue, and move around the free customer parking spaces throughout the system, move around the paid parking spaces, the permit spaces, to come up with an additional hundred spaces in capacity.
Okay, so I guess my...
To speak directly to your question about how, if we could modify the tax structure, that's information I'd have to go back and speak with.
Well, I don't really care so much about that, I guess my point was, if you were told we need to get a hundred-and-twenty-eight spaces, or whatever, X number of spaces for the use, dedicated use for the police facility, that is something that could be done.
Yes, that could be done.
Okay, then, it says, there are four-hundred-and-fifty spaces designated for permit parking. How many of those four-hundred-and-fifty spaces are actually used for permit parking?
We have, as of May, this month, we have four-hundred-and-seventeen permits sold for that garage. Now, that doesn't mean they all show up every day.
No, yeah, I understand that, but we have, by contract, we have to make four-hundred-and-seventeen spaces available to them, because if they show up and they don't have a space, we're in trouble. Yeah, so, yeah, yeah.
You get a cop.
Yeah, so, so, so that really, the four-hundred-and-fifty designated for permit parking is not someplace that we could make any, it's being utilized pretty much close to the maximum right now.
It is.
Okay, so if we were to say we would want to retain, you know, I'm using the hundred-and-twenty-three figure for the structure in the reduced program, or I could use the two-hundred-and-fifteen figure for the larger program, it would be possible to get those spaces in the parkade?
Yes.
Okay, then I guess I have a question for the chief then on that. The, those spaces are, are they, if we were to put, you know, the hundred-and-twenty-three or two-hundred-and-fifteen, would those be used for non-police vehicles?
Yeah, we wouldn't park police vehicles there.
Okay.
But the, so what happens is, as you realize, we have so many shifts, so the day shift folks come and they park on-site. So it's our swing shift folks that have to park off-site, so now they're getting off work at eleven and two AM to go back to that parking structure, and so that creates some concerns, you know, for some, some of our civilian employees.
Well, I understand that, and I guess I'm just curious as to two things, one, I would hope that having a police station in that area would be a bonus for the safety of the area, and two, you know, I don't know if that could be part of an officer's duty, you know, ten, you know, ten minutes after the shift to walk people to the, you know, a five-minute walk to the parking lot and come back, potentially.
I think, Counselor, I think what you have to remember is, Steve talked about people getting off at eight or ten, we have people coming on at eight and ten, and eleven and two, they're going home, we have people coming to work at five in the morning, so this is more an emotional discussion than a factual, but there are very few, there are operations in the city that work twenty-four hours, Salem Hospital, some of those, some of those locations, and they have, most of them have on-site parking, that's pretty close, and I think, over the course of thirty, forty years, I think, trying to build a police department that can house the parking for their employees is the way to go, but I understand the discussion.
And on that same line, now, the employees who are coming to work at that time now, certain percentages of them are parking down Commercial Street or someplace else and, you know, having the same walk.
Some of them park six blocks away, and at six o'clock at night, or whenever they can move their cars, they walk out and move them.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I have Counselor Dickey, and Counselor Nanki, and Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, just a couple of questions. So in terms of the current parking needs we have at this facility, do you find that people are choosing to park six blocks away and walk because they don't want to pay for parking, or because it's just not available?
So the, the parking list currently for on-site parking at City Hall, the wait is about two years. For Windows to the West, there is a wait, and I don't know exactly how much that is, but a lot of them choose to not pay, but a good portion of them just are waiting for parking spots, because those are, those spots are open to all city employees, so it's not just police employees.
All right, thanks, just a couple of follow-ups. In terms of the Marion Parkade, well, I talked about this last time, so I'm not gonna take up our time this time, if it actually becomes part of the discussion, I will bring it up again, in terms of my thoughts about that. I guess a question I have is, and I don't know if anybody knows this, maybe Mr. Ganey knows this, from, like, the employee entrance, how far would that be from there to the Marion Parkade where someone might park? Any ideas? Like, how far would they actually have to walk, not, because, you know, we think about the facility as, oh, here it is, right here on, you know, the street, but the, you know, employee entrance may be around the back or something, so just to get some perspective, does anybody know how far that would be?
Block and a half, block and a half to two blocks.
From the front of the building or an employee entrance?
From the employee entrance, which would probably be in the back of the facility, but...
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at public parking, which will probably be empty for fourteen to sixteen hours of the day. The, the level of parking that we have designed in there is to accommodate everybody at shift change then as well, and if that's the case, could we not, those people who come on shift at ten PM, reduce the overall parking by sharing that one first thing and last thing for shift change?
So here's what took a good portion of my life that I'll never get back, is trying to figure this out. So because of our shift changes, so if I'm working day shift and Alan is working swing shift, and we're gonna swap positions for a period of time, an hour to an hour and a half, we actually need three parking spots, one for his personal vehicle, one for my personal vehicle, and one for the patrol car. After that hour and a half, I go home, he takes the patrol car out, and then we only need one parking spot. Of course, on Fridays and Saturdays, we have more staff on, both in, for police and for WVCC, and so again, you have more parking spots needed. The number of police vehicles stays the same, but, but that, how many employees we're bringing on has changed. So as I explored this, I talked to some different folks that have recently built buildings, and in talking to state police, they built three-hundred-and-fifty parking spots, and they've already exceeded that, and have a number of vehicles that they cannot fit on their current, current parking level. I talked to Chief Darrell Talon, Chief of Monmouth, who said, figure out how much parking spot you, how many parking spots you think you need, and add half of it again, because in their new building, they've, they've run out of parking spots, and he said, you don't need it every day, but when you do, you really need it. And then Chief Mason from Independence said, you can't have enough parking spots. So these are folks that have recently built buildings, and that was the things that they said they had learned, was they didn't pay enough attention to parking.
So I suppose that follow-up question, that is, will some of that public parking possibly be used as we can use it, rather than having it just be a dead resource for two-thirds of a day?
Sure, it could be, depending on what we, what we talked about is, you've seen our space that we have now.
Right.
So if we host a training, so, you know, a training for detectives, or training for street crimes, we have to pay for someplace off-site to host it. So having the new facility with a training room and those kinds of facilities give us the ability to bring more training in, and we would use the parking there, also for things like Citizens Academy, National Night Out, the, you know, the meetings that we host of CPAC and some of those things. So again, you'll have times where it's used a lot, and then times where there is little use.
Counselor, that's the way it is today, our graveyard officers, or there are, some of our folks that come in late, will park in the parking structure where they can, they just have to be out there by eight o'clock in the morning when, when normal business activity takes place.
I just didn't know if that was looked at in the overall scheme of the numbers, utilizing that forty as well.
I don't believe it was, I don't believe it was utilized at all during the day, because there's an expectation from the public that they'll have parking, and obviously during the day or swing shift hours, that's when we need the most parking for our employees.
Okay, thanks.
So I just have a quick question for Officer, for Deputy Chief Belshaw, so do any of our police employees now park at the Pringle Parkade?
Yes, we have a number of them that have parking spots over there as well.
Okay, so we're just sort of utilizing the whole area around here, as well as what's right under this area?
Correct.
And what we're trying to do is to duplicate all of that in one location?
We also have police vehicles and some employees that park on the roof of the library parking structure as well.
Oh, there too, okay, well, everywhere then.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I have some others in line here, Counselor Lewis, and then Counselor Bennett.
Not sure who best to answer this, but I'm curious about the history of the Marion Parkade, its usage history.
I suppose that would be me, but I'd like to know more specifically of what your perceptions are.
Okay, my perception is that, at least in the fifteen years I've been here, downtown Salem is growing, it's more active, there's more people there, there's more cars parking in the parking garages. Am I right, am I wrong, and what, I mean, do you have any kind of numbers that I could see?
Yes, that's correct, and the, the demand and usage has shifted from place to place over the years. It used to be that there was a waiting list for the Liberty Garage. As businesses have moved and changed, that waiting list has gone away, there's now more capacity there. Same with Pringle, there, that garage used to be at capacity, and then when Blue Cross Blue Shield left, that changed the dynamic there. At the Marion Garage, it has never been at capacity, there are a lot of other uses other than just the straight-up customer use or permit use that occurs in that garage. The jurors, Washington, the Marion County jurors, use that space, students that go to Chomeka Community College downtown here use that space, the Equitable Center has an agreement where they can use forty-four spaces as needed for special events. So it's, it's just, it's a very dynamic scenario that's always shifting, where summertime usage will be low, as you head to the holidays, it increases significantly.
And then it was mentioned that the peak hours, forty percent of the spaces are filled, a question, what about like Christmas or holidays, is it ever a time where the Marion Parkade is used eighty, ninety percent of capacity?
I would say so. I, I think as you hit just before the holidays, you're, I don't know if you're at ninety percent, but you're, you're getting closer there.
And last question, and I'm glad Kristin, you're here, my perception is we want to grow downtown, we want to have even more and more people, drawing business especially to this specific area, how valuable is having a parking availability for residents or new businesses?
So that's a very good question, and I'm glad that you asked that, because as we are looking for either opportunity purchases or other sorts of redevelopment support in the downtown area, we're looking at opportunities where we could bring additional housing into the downtown core. And as we have partnered on these sorts of developments in the past to bring in housing, our garages have been an important factor in being able to park the tenants, because it just doesn't pencil out to do it on-site. So a lot of our permits in our garages are for downtown residents, and as we do grow our resident population down here, that need for that space will grow.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, just wanna second Counselor Lewis's comments on, on the value of that parking garage for growth in downtown, I think that we should never underestimate the importance of that Marion Parkade to the future. But Deputy Chief Belshaw, what I, I'm curious, as you describe the uses, okay, it sounds like you're gonna be using the Marion Parkade quite a bit anyway, I mean, that as you talk about, you may need half again as many parking spots during various periods, when you're talking about training and the whole batch of other things that you do over there at the, let's say, at the new facility, that when you look at the numbers up there, it really is gonna require an overflow parking space within a block and a half, anyway, sort of like the way we've ended up with the convention center working, too, where we're using parkades for that.
Sure, depending on the, the size of the training, you know, we could have anywhere from sixty to seventy people there, so that, you know, that forty parking spots out front won't do it for, for that. We also, when we have SWAT call-outs, we have officers from Kaiser and SWAT medics that are gonna get there and use that parking lot to get in and out, and other things like officer-involved shootings, we have attorneys that are coming down, and we have OSP showing up to do the investigation. So again, daytime is typically our high usage, but nighttime at certain events can be pretty active as well, so.
Well, I'm thinking about the two of you with three cars.
Yeah.
How you're gonna shuffle those around in your existing structure here, with a current demand of three-hundred-and-fifty-five and a total of three-hundred-and-seventy-eight spaces, it, I don't see how you do it on some of the shift changes, just routinely, not, not even on special occasions like calling out the SWAT team.
Correct.
But that, that there will be this mix that is gonna, you're just gonna have to have that parkade available to you at some level, and probably a growth... that parcade available to you at some level and probably a growing level over time anyway, unless we're going to add another floor to your parcade, to your parking onsite. That this could become part of the, a longer-term solution.
True, and depending on at what point that becomes necessary, it may be necessary to acquire other property to add more parking because the parcade is being fully utilized. And so we may have to consider something like that as well.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Bednarz.
I had two questions. First was development in the private sector, we have to have so many parking stalls per square foot. Either way, I calculate we're in the neighborhood of 1 to 390, 370, depending on which size facility is being built. Was the requirement normal for a normal office or normal, police station isn't normal. So what is the requirement, and how does it compare to the actual number? And how I came to that, by the way, was just taking the 378 or the 338 and dividing it, or dividing 125,000 or 148,000 into those numbers and...
Yeah, so the code requirement for a police facility is one for every 500 square feet. I'm not sure the exact requirement for office space or anything like that. One for every 350 square feet.
So we...
This is a less parking-intensive code requirement anyway.
That 1 to 350, is that for general office? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. And then the next question came to, I know that there's an upper limit of how many parking stalls you can have relative to the square footage. When does mass transit and other forms of transportation come in? This isn't even discussed here tonight, of trying to get people to ride share, card share, mass transit, that kind of thing. How does that calculate into this whole thing? Who do I ask?
It's not calculated into the current demand, but certainly that's a strategy as need grows that we would have to explore, just like Marion Parkade and other solutions.
As long as you're talking, that's for the employees getting to work and not for the officers going to calls on...
Well, it's just, I just know that in the private sector, it's one of those things that, oh geez, aggravate, it's an aggravant, and then we're talking about downtown. Well, that's the aggravation of having housing downtown, is they've got to provide, what, two stalls per living unit, and it becomes cost prohibitive, basically. It doesn't pencil out. So I'm looking at the same thing for the police, that they have to abide by the same rules the rest of us do. Sounds like they do. And then the other question I had was mass transit or other forms of transportation, alternative transportation. So we're not just talking about stacking a single individual in a car in a single space all day long at the cost of whatever per stall, which is expensive.
Sure.
All right, are there further questions regarding parking? Further comments from counselors regarding parking? All right, then we will move along and talk about the police facility's scope and size. And I would begin taking names if counselors want to discuss at this point, the size and the scope. And I'm cognizant of the time, it's 8:30 now, and I think we probably wanted to try to adjourn around nine. But I do think this is an important opportunity to begin this discussion or continue it. Counselor Anderson?
This is from Mr. Ganey, I would say. One of the items in the planned situation is the community room. By my rough calculations, I think that if that were removed, it would be maybe $750,000 or could you, because it's, it was, how many square feet is it? And are we going to average that out at the, gosh, I'm forgetting, 295 per square foot? Or is it greater or lesser?
Just sort of the cost per square foot for a community room?
Yeah.
It can, I think it's not significantly more, it's going to be, I think, it's not going to be as expensive as a WVCC square footage. You know, a space like this is a great community room. I think if we wanted to emulate this quality, it's going to be in keeping with, it's not going to be in excess. So in terms of square footage, the, sorry. The net square footage would be around, all the public facilities on that first level is around 6,700 square feet. That's not one room, though, so there's like...
Right, no, I'm talking about the community room. I understand, there's going to be lobbies and rooms for victims and, you know, the stuff that is done and standard police work that you need to have. I'm just looking at the community room itself.
Sure, I'll pull that up in just a second here.
I mean, I'm all in favor of having those kind of public areas that help the police do their work most efficiently and appropriately. If you need some time, I'm happy to...
Yeah, I do need a little time.
Okay, so we can move on if you could come back.
It's about 5,000, is it? Forty, 4,800 square feet?
So if you multiply that out by 295, we're going to be, gosh, 1.5 million? And then you would have to make, would you make those same factors as the contingent factors that took the 6 million reduction to 11 million?
Yes, but you wouldn't have the parking reduction most likely.
Okay.
But close, yeah.
So we're going to, we're going to be talking, then we're going to be close to 2.5 million to 3 million, someplace in that range?
You are, keep in mind that the community room is also a joint-use facility.
Yeah, yeah.
For training. If you did have an EOC event, that would be used for that too. Training.
Would 3 million plus or minus be a ballpark figure on that?
Did you do the math?
Well, in my head, but, that's dangerous. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, I mean, you can answer that question later, we don't need to take the time now to do that, but...
It's about 2 million.
Okay, okay.
1.82.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Counselor McCoyd.
Well, if we're going to talk about scope and size, I've obviously been chewing on the WVCC here for quite a while. And really, my biggest concern was my, way back when in April, when I couldn't get an answer on how are we going to grow? Are we not going to grow? Why do we need a bigger one if we're not going to grow? And the answer tonight is, we're going to grow, and we're going to grow substantially if we go from 18 to 30 consoles. And so frankly, that's enough for me in looking at the numbers. I don't think there's a big enough savings to build a standalone, so I'm now in favor of having, including that in the police facility. And so for me, after the discussions tonight and new information, I would be in favor of the larger facility and moving forward that way.
Counselor Lewis.
Question for Chief Moore. Do the, does the EOC and the 911 center, do they run parallel, or do they ever intersect, or are they completely different?
Well, as it currently is, the EOC is used as a training room. When the EOC is activated, they run concurrently, the dispatch is in one room, and the EOC operations are in another room. I believe that's what you were asking.
Yeah, another question. You don't want to put all your eggs in one basket. Is there a reason, a logical reason, that is so compelling you want the two of them to be together? Or would it make more sense to have them be separate in case something happened to one? We talk about an earthquake a lot, but we don't talk too much about people carrying suitcases into buildings and blowing them up.
I would say my number one reason for having the 911 facility, the 911 WVC Center in the new police facility is safety and security. If you look at our 911 center today, somebody could drive a pickup truck through the front, through any of the windows, and the security in it is terrible, quite frankly. And I think those, as we've talked about terrorism and issues such as that, I think a 911 center is a, certainly a viable target for anyone that wants to disrupt city operations. So safety and security of none of the operation, but the employees that work there, is my number one compelling reason to put it in the new facility.
Counselor Lewis, did you get an answer to your question of why have the EOC and 911 together?
Yeah, I did.
You did, okay, thanks. Counselor McCoyd? Nope, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mayor. It kind of goes across all spectrums, but with WVCC as well, knowing that you have, in some cases, two people, three vehicles, and in other cases, two people, two vehicles that are in the facility at the same time. Do we alternate the, or would we, in this case, alternate the shift start schedule so everybody in the building isn't coming in and utilizing that two-for-one at the same time?
No. We have a great deal of overlap in all of our shifts, if that's what you were asking. So the majority of the time, there is a need for additional parking spaces. The overlaps help us during the busiest times of the day and night. I think that's the same at WVCC. We don't have strict eight-hour shifts where we have people working eight hours, and then everybody goes home, and then somebody comes on for eight more hours. We have, as Deputy Chief Belshaw talked about, we probably have 14 different shifts per day, and it's for the efficiency of the operation is why we do that, the overlap of putting resources out there when we need them.
And I think the effectiveness too. It provides the peak staffing during the times of the day, times, days of the week where we have the most calls, the most...
Just looking at what our normal officer shift schedule is now, the main breaks versus WVCC main breaks, and how did we look at that parking with shift schedules in mind?
Yes, so WVCC's needs and shifts are quite a bit different than police needs. And our, as the chief mentioned and the city manager, our staffing is based on our call load and what, you know, when we have the most calls for service. And so that's what we focus on as far as our, when we bring the officers in. But we have, you know, we have two-day shifts, two-swing shifts, two graveyard shifts. We have gang officers that come in at a different time, we have school officers that come in at a different time. So our shifts are staggered a lot throughout the day.
So we don't have the large groupings?
No, we don't have like 50 officers coming in at eight o'clock. We have, you know, six officers coming in here, eight officers coming in. You know, with school officers, we have 11 coming in at one time, but that's a pretty large group there.
All right, thanks.
All right. Further comments and discussions, Counselor Bednarz?
It's a little bit different. I'm just curious, vacating this building, we have any idea of remodel costs on this to get it to, I presume we're going to turn it back into office space and get community development in here and so forth? That's not included in any of this calculation at this point? But do we have any sort of budget on...
That's correct.
Repurposing the space?
If you give me just a few seconds, I can pull it up out of my old 2010 data. So just take me a minute.
It's just, it is one of those reality costs, it's going to be out there. I mean, at some point, this place is going to be vacant if we get the new police station, and we're going to want to repurpose it. I know we're going to want to bring in the other areas of our city, all that leased space that we have out there, and it's going to have an impact, and we've got to be prepared for it.
Well, sure. But we haven't really, we haven't needed to go into that discussion because it has nothing to do with building a police facility.
Well, I came to this discussion from one of the footnotes underneath the budget for the O'Brien site, and that came to the contingency fee, the contingency amount. If we had money left of contingency, it would be used, probably be used here to refurbish and repurpose this property. That's where I, I got the connection.
So we looked at two different, two different components of the work for here when we were looking at building the facility on campus, and one was seismic upgrade and one was just renovation of the space once the police moved out. And the number for that was around 3 or 4 million bucks to basically do a complete gut of the first floor and get it reset.
My hope is, is that we have it left over, if not more, in the contingency side of this budget, so that we're not having to go back out and try to figure out where we're going to pull another 3, 4 million dollars from.
Okay, are there any further discussions this evening regarding scope or size? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I'm going to come back to a discussion that I've raised before, and that is about the earthquake-proofing the Civic Center. And I've seen the studies that were done in 2011 and done in 2014, and my understanding from the staff report we got was that we would need, these aren't complete full studies, and in order to do that, we would need three to six months to come up with those studies. And I've got two concerns, and I guess they're both related. The first one is really related to the overall issue here, is that, like it or not, this is going to be a component of any campaign, and there are going to be some people saying, we're going to have to deal with the issue of, I guess I'll put it this way, we're going to have to deal with the issue of why don't we also do the seismic? And it would be a lot easier to respond to that if we could say, the seismic is going to cost this many million dollars, and that might be the concern. And we really can't say that now because we don't have the full discussion. And I note that it was in February that we discussed the potential seismic savings, and that was over three months ago. So it just would have been nice to have some sort of studies done so we can present this at some point to the public, and, you know, maybe we, that can be done between now and November. But I think that's going to be part of the education process also, that we might really want to look into how we're going to deal with the seismic issue. Because, you know, the figures we've seen in the, you know, the other studies were 15 to 20 million. Well, is it still 15 to 20 million, or is it not? And if it's increased in amount, that's something that we ought to be able to tell the public. And right now, we really can't do that. So I think that's a matter of the public education that is going to have to happen between now and any bond measure.
Well, Counselor Anderson, I can speak to that a bit, and that is that this council has not directed staff to go out and contract for that type of seismic survey, although we have recently had some discussions that said, hey, wait a moment, we're not only going to, when we look at seismic, we should not only look at this civic campus, we have the senior center, we have the public workshops, we have other facilities around the city, we have the West Salem Library Branch, we have other buildings, we have parking structures in the downtown area. We have a long list of buildings if we're going to do a seismic study that need to all be evaluated, and then we come forward with a plan. We are clearly, this city council is clearly not at a point to be out discussing seismic upgrade because our direction to staff has been, we are focusing on this police facility. That's the crucial need, that's what we need right now, and that's what we've been spending more than a year trying to get down to where we are today so that we would be able to be on timeline for a November ballot measure. And Tom, and Counselor Anderson, that's where this council's been headed for the last two years.
No, everything you've said, Mayor, I don't disagree with. It just points up to me that these are things that we should do everything we can to make known to the public.
Well, absolutely, and I believe that we definitely very clearly will, and we definitely very clearly will not confuse the public by going out to them and saying, oh, and by the way, we could have some extra money, we'll do some seismic upgrade. I think that would kill this measure, totally kill it. Other comments? Okay, where we are now is that we have a public hearing scheduled for June 8th. Encourage the community to come and please testify, or if not in person, certainly by email, letter, we would very much welcome that input. That's, that public hearing on June 8th... That public hearing on June 8, then, should be followed by, if there's a consensus among the council, a motion that would create a resolution, a motion to refer staff to come back to us with a resolution that we could then refer the measure to the ballot in November. Are there any questions about the public hearing that's going to come up? Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one piece in regards to the polling and the need for a community conversation. It would be helpful to know, or at least have some beginning information on how we plan to do that, because if that doesn't work, and we don't have a good plan going forward for that, why would I vote for something that would dissent it to the voters that if I know it was potentially going to lose? So that is a very important element to me on--
I don't understand what you're saying.
How we take this to the voters and how we try to get that level from base 52 up to a decent level rather than having it fail. Because I don't want to vote for anything that's going to fail. So how would we be looking at moving forward?
So you're recommending that we would develop a plan--
Yes.
-- for the campaign before we vote whether we will have--
Not necessarily, just at the public hearing to have some idea of how we plan on moving forward with that. And kind of some of those--
Have we done that in the past when we've done bond measures? I haven't done a bond measure before, so those of you who are on council that have gone down this road need to tell us how do you do this?
Well, I know that we've had a couple come through, and we basically said, no, we're not going to send it to the voters, because we don't have a good enough approval rating. We pulled back a couple of those. The other ones, we actually had some pretty strong front-end numbers, and everybody was comfortable with moving forward. This number is kind of in that icky spot where it's plurality, but not a strong one. And so I think it would be wise for us to have, you know, is somebody going to be championing that outside of city government? Because city government's hands are tied as soon as we do that. And we need to schedule that referral at the right time as well, so we don't hamstring staff too early. We find our partners out in the community that are going to help drive that education level of voters, because everybody still looks at that 9 bucks a month and doesn't relate to bond indebtedness, that it's not going to be an additional $9 as, you know, things roll off. So there's a lot of, especially in this one, communication and education that needs to take place in the community, and we're talking four months.
Exactly. Counselor Anderson?
By June, yeah.
I would echo what Counselor Nanki said about the bond indebtedness, because I have a hard time understanding it, and I have, you know, I've had many discussions with staff and councilors, and I think the public does, too, because I think what they hear is, gee, I'm paying X dollars tax per month or per year, is how they look at it, and then all of a sudden, I'm not going to be paying another 200, 300, 400 dollars, whatever the value of their house is. Well, that's not really true. They're not going to be paying that, but we've got to explain to them, and we have to explain why it's not going to happen. And I know, Counselor Nanki, you took a stab at it a couple meetings ago, and I just think that's something that, you know, we're talking about the frequently asked questions. We need to have something that explains that, you know, at, you know, I don't want to say, at the lowest common denominator level.
Counselor Bennett, followed by Counselor Bednarz?
Yeah, I wondered if, when this comes up to the council, will that include, then, maybe the center explaining how bonded and what the -- how the bonded indebtedness is structured, how repayment can be structured? I mean, there's a lot of strategies for how to do this and keep flat, a flat bond cost to voters, where they're not paying anything more at any point along the way. And that's, I just wondered if that'll be explained as part of this discussion.
We can provide that.
Yeah, I think it'd be really helpful, because I think most people don't understand this. I found it even during the campaign, talking, trying to explain this. The average newspaper person, or blogger, or anything else has real trouble. These are difficult concepts for them to understand. They're going to be carrying part of the message, and then I think as voters look at it, they need to understand they're not going to be paying 9 bucks a month. It's a different, there's a different concept here, how this works. And we've done it over the years, and it's worked extremely well.
Okay. Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, because we actually, as part of selling the last bond measure, agreed to hold the line at $1.01 per thousand. We haven't, as a council, looked at our long-term bonding strategy, but when you look at some of those, it might make sense to go to $1.04 or $1.50, and that will deter, you know, from where we are right now, that'd be 50 cents rather than 54 cents per thousand, which is kind of what that shows. If it was 25, it'd be half of that, so people would really be paying $4.50 or 4, yeah, $4.50 for--
Yeah. It's how debt's managed.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So am I hearing a desire on the part of councilors? Good suggestions, good recommendations, I'm glad you're bringing them up, to have that kind of information available on June 8, and be able to discuss that on June 8 as a council as part of our decision-making process? I'm hearing, I'm seeing heads nod. Okay.
But the city manager looked like he was jumping towards his microphone to qualify that to some extent.
Well, we'll do our best. It may not be certainly as robust or as complete later in the month, but we'll do our best to provide the information that you're requesting.
Counselor Bednarz?
So most particular, because I also am on the, but the finance committee, thank you, and I presumed, Counselor Anderson, that's what you were referring to, where we have at 101, as we retire these bonds, say, an example, if we were to start building next year for, say, the first few years, we would pay only the interest and thereafter as the bonds retired, so that the people, the citizens of our community don't really see a spike in their property taxes. It really is retiring one, and that money rolls over, and now it starts paying off the police. And that's the whole thing. What I would look forward to, there's a wonderful bar graph that we've been looking at in the finance committee that really gives a good visualization of that scenario.
Counselor Dickey?
Thank you. I'm going to echo what everyone said, because I have been specifically asked this question at a neighborhood meeting about that bonding and how that works, and anything visual would be fantastic. I know that, you know, if we move forward with this, there will be a whole developed campaign with materials and that kind of thing. But, you know, when I'm going to neighborhood meetings once a month, I can't wait for a campaign organizer to put materials together when I've already missed, you know, and I've got neighborhoods that don't meet in the summer and that kind of thing. So, you know, anything that we can get that would be helpful now, the graph. I know on the finance committee, it's been a while since I've been to a committee meeting, but we remember discussing raising that fee, and I remember seeing that graph. So an infographic was the first thing that popped into my head, something very visual that, you know, I can take out to my neighborhoods, even as we're beginning to talk about this. I'm just, you know, I don't want to get into the weeds of how we're going to run a campaign before we've even made that decision, but I know even those early conversations, I mean, when this hits the paper, people are going to be asking questions of us long before we'll have a campaign completely ready to go.
Right. And Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, if I can, because the voters will want to know.
Sure.
As soon as we say, bring us back a resolution to send it to the voters, how are you going to pay for it exactly? And we have not had that discussion as a council on what we do with that dollar one versus some other number. So those, and the graphs that we have right now wouldn't necessarily be developed for that, because we still don't have our long-term bonding strategy. And if we lose one of these, we will be the equivalent of a tax increase on people, because you won't be able to hold that line anymore. And if we showed the old graph before I came in, it was, we were up in like $2.36 a thousand. I mean, it was big. And, you know, we're a buck now, so big difference.
So in thinking ahead on the schedule, after the public hearing at the meeting on June 8, the next time we come together as a council, because we changed our calendar for June, is the June 27 meeting. Am I correct? That's right?
Correct.
Okay. So it may be even the July, even the June 27 meeting before we would be able to have this full discussion about bonded indebtedness and all of that. And then, if we could make a decision that night, fine, but if we needed to go forward into July, we'd be into the middle of July by the time we were making a decision. I don't want to rush, but at the same time, we have to remember what the calendar provides to us.
And speaking of calendar, there is a hard deadline of August 8 for the November election. That is a statutory deadline.
Okay. So then our first meeting in July, if I have this down correctly, is July 11? I don't have a calendar in front of me. Does somebody look at that? Is that right? I know my phone's back there somewhere.
We're not supposed to use it on the floor.
July 11th and then July 25th.
All right. Somebody's looking at a calendar.
It's not the Internet.
All right. Is that right? July 11 is our first meeting in the month of July?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And then July 25.
Mm-hmm. And then we're at August 8 is the deadline. Okay. So we just know what we've got some work cut out for us.
I love that.
Okay. All right. Is there any further business that needs to come before us? Any further discussions about next steps? Counselor Benjamin?
Well, I think in regards to the bonding issue and how that floats out, I think it's more the mechanics than it is actual numbers and stuff. So, yeah, I don't see that there has to be a long dissertation about it, but this is the mechanics, this is how it works moving forward, this is how this piece is going to fit in, so the general public gets an idea about what that looks like, and, oh, that's how it works.
Mm-hmm. Is that what you're talking about, Counselor Nanki? When you're talking about--
They'll want to know what we are actually going to do. So maybe next finance committee meeting, which is coming up here real quick, we look at, trying to bring some recommendation to the council on that as well.
Okay. I think that's a good point. Okay. If there's nothing further, then we are adjourned.